Oh, thank you.
Call the meeting to order at seven o'clock, even though that clock says it's not. Soon as Marcia gets seated, we'll have the roll call. Have the roll call, please.
Commissioner Arthur Reed.
President.
Commissioner Warnock.
Here.
Mr. Scully.
Present.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Mayor? The mayor is absent.
We'd rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need approval of the minutes of the March 10th meeting.
Motion, we approve.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Motion and second, any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is passed. We have no executive sessions to report. No public presentations. No business meetings on the agenda, business meeting items on the agenda, citizens input. Oh, John, you can get up and speak first. If you will go to the podium.
Members of the board, Chief of Police, Mr. Bonenberger, I, my name is John Ganey. My wife and I owned two commercial properties at 101 Ryan Drive and 111 Ryan Drive. And at the present time, the 111 Ryan Drive is going to be leased to Mrs. Doctor Sanchez, who is going to reopen a pediatrics office in town, which the town and the surrounding citizens desperately need in this area. My, the contractor that Mr. Sanchez contracted to perform the, the building and construction is within, it's an interior design, has been withheld for the past two weeks because of a permit hasn't been issued by Mr. Bonenberger. And my question is to the town officials is why does it take two weeks to pull a building permit? When other municipalities and the counties issue permits within 30 minutes of the requested work? This present contractor, who's at 111 Ryan Drive now, within the past two years has pulled 40 permits from the county and every permit was issued within 30 minutes. I wish somebody could answer that question, why it take, why is it not streamlined and why isn't it more efficient?
Commissioner Walker, can I address that?
Yes.
Mr. Ganey, you purchased this property February 18th?
Yes.
And you dropped off your application for building permit March the 11th?
I did not drop it off, the contractor did.
Okay, but it was dropped off the town March 11th. Are you familiar with what's been going on on Ryan Drive lately with the water issues?
Yes, I have been reading that issue, yes.
I would advise you at this time to not be in a rush of up to about 30 minutes for something going on with a property on Ryan Drive that is associated with the developer who developed that community. We are constantly, in the past two weeks, uncovering flaws, cheap materials used. And that's been taking up a lot of time. We had 13 residents up there with no water, the road dug up. Applications coming through Town Hall, I don't believe any unless they're very small, applications can be done anywhere in just 30 minutes. If this is for a commercial property of medical use and a change of an interior, change of ownership, it's not going to go through in 30 minutes. So I empathize with your frustration of wanting to get the work done. And yes, this community could use medical attention. Hopefully the members of this community can afford it. That, you know, that she has more business and has to put on more people. We really hope that'll happen. But we'd ask at this time, knowing what's going on up there, associated with that developer that built that community, for your safety, the leasur's safety and long-term benefit, to not be in such a rush. Because you could have that building ready to go and somebody to move in and no water. And I don't think she can run a pediatrics facility with no water, because that is a big problem right now with that road. And every time we fix a spot, we found another place that was done very cheaply. So we would appreciate your patience as we go through this, because there's some real problems on that street. Last week, I spoke for about 20 minutes about what has happened to the residents of that community because of someone building that community with inferior products, just to line their pockets with cash. And if you would want to come in and meet with Mr. Bonenberger, myself, the mayor, anybody on this board, we could give you some background on what's going on on there. So that when you get in there and get everything ready to go and then can't do business because you don't have any water, you'll understand it's not this board or this town administrator trying to hold you up or just slow you down. It's not that at all. We try to move things through as efficiently as possible. Things are starting to take off in this community right now, as a result of our water plant being built, the fact that we're centrally located on a heavy traffic area such as 273. And the community is growing and getting ready to try to grow some more. But with what's happened over there in that community at this time, it's not anything that the town or the town administrator or our office manager is just moving too slowly and not, and dragging their feet on your application. So those are the things I'd like to tell you about what's going on over there right now. And to, please be patient with us so we can help protect you and your lease going forward. Because you could be in there and not be able to do anything because you won't have no water. It's a very real possibility right now.
Yes, sir. I realize, and I have been reading the articles, and I realize the problems you're going into. That development was put in approximately 25 years ago. And you expected a 30-year expected lifespan of that roadway.
More than, it's not just the roadway.
This is not uncommon, problems that other municipalities are also experiencing and the county. Okay?
Yeah.
All I'm asking is, I'm not putting the blame on Mr. Bonenberger whatsoever. I'm only asking that the system get more streamlined, that a person doesn't have to wait two weeks. A contractor can get paid so he can support his family instead of waiting for two weeks. A doctor can't open up a doctor's office because we're waiting on a permit for two weeks. I realize everybody has problems.
You could be, you could have that office ready to go and not be able to open because of the water issues. But when we had a water line break here in the center of town twice, the whole town was without water. And because of poor planning in the past, water lines not being decommissioned and hooked up to the new ones. And as we're digging up there, trying to secure the piping up there and see what we don't know, the more we dig, the worse it gets. And I'll be talking about that later tonight if you stick around. I don't know if you're complaining to us or about us. Anything we can do to streamline those permitting processes and make them more efficient, we know, I know we will.
If I could.
Yes, sir.
If I could get Mr. Bonenberger to explain to me the process that has gone through when a application for a permit like this is received by the town. I'm not really familiar with that process.
First of all, in all due respect, I would challenge the turnaround on a commercial building permit. It's 30 minutes' time, just, just, nobody's doing that because of all the liability. There's accessibility issues, there's fire code issues. I personally, when I talked to you yesterday, I had spent about a half an hour, a couple of days previously, when I talked to you yesterday, I told you that I would have it done today, and it is done, your contractor has been called. To give you some clarification on it, there are accessibility issues with your building, with the plan as submitted. There's one bathroom that's recommended to be non-accessibility and another one that is accessible. And it's not uncommon for people to believe that employees don't have to have the benefits of an accessible bathroom. That's not the case. They do. Whether they're an employer or resident or not, they have to have accessible bathrooms. There's also an issue that your building is rated under a business occupancy, given the square footage. It has a capacity no more than 20 people. There are 17 waiting area seats shown on the drawing. So it, I can take it at face value to say that there's going to be 17 people in there. A doctor, somebody at the front desk and a nurse. You're already up to 20 there. I'm not concerned about the fact that during flu season, you might have 25 people in there or whatever. That's not my concern. The code doesn't have to be that rigid. My concern is, is that the accessible bathroom that was being provided is being provided as a unisex bathroom. And by the building code, you can only have a unisex bathroom if it services 15 people or less. And so there's already 17 seats in there. The plan that was submitted, there's additional emergency lighting that was not shown in there. Now, with all that said, I do operate a little bit differently than other code departments. Other code departments will really, and I'm not saying anybody in the county, just from my 30 years of doing this. Other code departments will worry about the paper details so that nobody can come back and say that anything that was done different to the plan. In other words, what I'm saying is you will find code departments that the issue that I raised over the bathroom would, would result in the plan being given back to your architect and being told they have to redraw it to show that bathroom in there. I don't operate that way because I believe we can work things out in the field. So, and we've already managed to work a lot of things out. I gave your contractor an idea of a way he could appeal one of the bathroom requirements because he informed me that the waiting area, there's an area that's sort of going to be like a quarantine area because you're talking young children, that it would be an area that really sick children would be put in there so they don't infect other children. So my point is, you're not, you're not designed to have 17 people in that, in that, in that facility at one time. There could be five and two kids sitting in a quarantine area. So then I get that information, I asked him to give me a letter so that I can put in the file. And what a lot of people don't realize is that if you're dealing with a contractor and a code says something has to be two and a half inches, it can't be two inches. If I don't enforce that, technically, nobody can come back on me personally or the board personally. It's deemed as a part of the process. But handicap accessibility is civil liberties violations. And when you waive a code requirement regarding civil liberties violations, no errors in admission to the Town of Rising Sun is going to protect me personally, nor is it going to protect you personally, because it's viewed as a civil liberties violation and it's a form of discrimination, whether it's race, religion, or in this case being handicapped. So the review process is not done in 20 minutes' time when you're looking at all of that kind of stuff. Would you may be your question, we, we tell people, typically it's understood in the industry that a commercial project can take up to 30 days for review. I feel comfortable in saying that we can get it done in two weeks, which is 10 business days. And that's what we pretty much do. And today was day 10 in 10 business days since we had the application. So we met our internal goals of getting things turned around. The other thing that we do that other code departments might not do is we will review a plan even though all the applications are not submitted. There was one portion of the application that we did not get until yesterday. That didn't stop us from reviewing the plan. Again, we're not looking to hang people up on these little details because we are a small community and we welcome those types of businesses. And if you remember when I did an inspection with you once before in the hair salon, I was very open about, we'll work this stuff out in the field. I'm a firm believer that I will never waive a public safety issue, but there's more than one way to achieve the, that goal. And so I do believe in working things out in the field and not making people have to resubmit documents over and over and over again. So the actual review on something like this is about three, three and a half hours to do to do it right. Because I don't just tell people, you can't do this. I find the section of the code so that they can reference that. I give them probate of what it says in the code. I do, you know, that due process so they can challenge it or question whatever. But the overall process is about three, three and a half hours on this. Big lots, for instance, that was about 10 or 15 hours on that. The other thing we don't do is our fee schedule allows us to charge for that planned review. On these smaller projects, I don't do that because we're not looking to hit people in the pocketbook to make it harder to build. On a big lots or something larger where you're talking 15 hours, we will charge for that planned review. But if you look, if you look at your building permit tomorrow, you're going to see all the wave on the planned review fees to make it more suitable. So I apologize that we were not on the same page, but that's the reason why it takes longer than 30 minutes to review a plan like that.
Okay, Mr. Bonenberger, I'll take your word for that. But when I contacted the county, no matter what, no matter what size the job is, large or big, commercial, the application is approved within 30, at most one hour. But my point is this, this application was submitted two weeks ago. Can I ask you personally when you looked at it?
The first time I spoke to you was yesterday.
So that's the first time you looked at the application?
No, it's the first time you spoke to me was yesterday. I had looked at the application.
My question is, when did you actually look at the request?
Probably what, yesterday's Monday, probably Wednesday of last week. And that's when Marcia was showing you some of my planned review comments to that point already.
And the builder, the contractor told me he has called every day to see what the progress was. And each time he was told that you weren't in your office. Is that true?
It may be true. As Commissioner Arthur Reed talked about, we have water leaks. I was at a meeting today for two hours with the engineers for the new water line. I go to a sewer plant meeting every two weeks.
Well, yesterday, when the contractor came up to your office, were you not standing beside the wall, reading a magazine?
No.
He was, he was asking you questions and you wouldn't even face and turn him to answer them? You were just asking him off the wall, answering him?
I can tell you with my office manager sitting there, I over, I don't know your contractor. I heard her talk about the project. She came over to me and asked me, when did I think I could finish the review? I turned and said to him, I'll get it to you tomorrow. That's the only, that's the only communication myself and the contractor had.
And when I spoke to you yesterday, you said you would try to look at it last night?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
But my complaint is, and I will continue to complain, is how can we make the process better and faster for the consumer?
Mr. Ganey, in all due respect, and don't take this the wrong way, we are not sitting here waiting for building permit applications to come in so that we will have something to do. The benefit of the county is they have a full staff and that's what their sole job is. We are a small community. We could go out and pay $30,000 for salary for a building inspector and, you know, the benefits associated with that and wait for the 150 building permits that we get in a year's time. It, that's why the industry standard, although it might only take three hours, nobody's, and again, I'll take your word for what the county says, I just know from a professional standpoint, there's no way you review a accessibility fire codes. Does the building have to have a sprinkler system in it? Does it have to have a generator? Does it have adequate emergency lighting? Are GFIs where they're supposed to be? If they have the benefit of a large staff, so they're doing that in 30 minutes' time, an hour, God bless them. But that's not the way it happens here, only because we don't have the revenue to try to, to have a code officer sitting around waiting for that. So again, in all due respect, I do not think that 10 days is unreasonable for someone to wait. And I'll say this, and I've said it to other people before. The applicant, I'm going to separate you from it. The applicant and the builder and the property owner had days and weeks and months, whatever, to plan on what they wanted to do and make sure that everything is done the right way. Why doesn't the code department get the opportunity to make sure it's done the right way? Because at the end of the day, when the project goes bad and you may or may not like what your contractor did, first thing you're going to do is come to us and say, well, how did you miss that? It was right there on the plan, you didn't flag it on it. Or for me to enlighten you on things that maybe your contractor is not catching. So again, I don't think that 10 days is unreasonable when people have all the time to plan everything they need to do and yet we're all of a sudden supposed to just turn the building permit around in 30 minutes, an hour, or whatever. Or be able to rearrange all the scheduling to fit that three hours in the next day or the, you know, the day after that. Again, I just don't think that 10 days, 10 business days is unreasonable.
Yes. Didn't the county do the permit processing for the town earlier?
Yes.
Within the past couple of years?
They did it up through 2007.
Was there a reason why the town took over that process?
Plenty of reasons.
Is it revenue reasons?
No. It's reasons like what happened in Ryan Drive. Because nobody was properly inspecting and then we got stuck with the problem like we have now. So why let somebody outside of the community come in, make revenue off the town, but not properly protect the town in the long run? And that's what we have there.
In the long run, it's still a revenue issue.
No, sir.
It has to be.
For you, maybe it is. Evidently, I don't think we're going to find an answer here that's going to satisfy you. You're turning over now from the 10 days that you feel was unreasonable, now you want to make it a money issue, sir. We're getting off track.
Okay.
Like I said, we, we apologize if it's inconvenienced you and your builder, but I think in the long run, you'll be thankful that it, that we did review this properly.
Okay. Mr. Bonenberger, one question and I'll leave, I'll leave. If I hadn't have called you yesterday, would we have gotten a permit today?
Yes.
Really?
Yes.
You're telling me the truth?
Yes. I mean, Marcia could tell you that I'd go over my list of things that I have to get done. And your building permit along with another large project is city and they actually submitted their permit before you. And I expedited yours to the top because yours is an easier review than the other ones. Again, following in that guideline that we really can have up to 30 days to review a plan.
I'm assuming that you wouldn't let the county resume inspections again, would you?
Why should we? Give us, sir.
Okay.
Can you give me a reason why we should?
That's all. Thank you very much. Sorry to bother you.
No bother, sir. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you, John. Joanne Osborne.
Thank you. Good evening, all. Just here to find out if anyone has spoken to our friendly post office about in-town delivery. Either we all have it or we all don't, is my opinion. And since half of us have it, I think the other half of us should get it. Any response from the post office?
I think there's been plenty of stirrings over it, let's say, because I mean, I've, I've read both articles. But did, I think, was the mayor going to talk with the postmaster on that?
I don't know what the mayor is. I know that I've had conversations with another community that had a very similar issue that gave me some ideas on how to deal with it above and beyond the post office. So we're working on it, is my point.
If I can just say.
Want to share any of that with us?
No, I'd rather not.
Okay, thank you.
Joanne, I'm assuming you're referring to the letter that we all got about our post office boxes have to be on there. And I can only share your frustration in that I have a couple, I don't know if they're doctors offices or whatever, how many times I've told them that they have to put the post office box on there. They're hand addressing an envelope and not putting it on there. You can order things online and they absolutely will not accept that post office box. Granted, I know by the delivery method they choose, they need the street address. But that, from what the letter said, that post office box has to be referenced and they will not accept it. So I understand your frustration. I'm in the same boat. I don't, I don't know what the solution is. But I know some of my mail is going to get returned.
No, my point, well, that is part of my point.
That is her point.
But that's not the entire point. The entire point is that those of us who live in what I'm going to call old town don't get mail delivery.
Right.
The house right next to the post office gets mail delivery and it's within the town limits. If Rising Sun is too small for in-town delivery, which is what they tell us, nobody in town should be getting mail delivery. And that could be a town resolution, is that all post office, all mailboxes along the road are gone. You will go to the post office and get your mail because Rising Sun doesn't have in-town delivery. So if you live in town, don't expect it. Now, and then we could see how quickly the post office would say, oh, by the way, yeah, I think you are big enough for a in-town delivery. That's my point.
No, it's a good point.
I've been harping on that for a number of years to the post office, deaf ears.
And I think that we all, I can't, maybe I shouldn't speak for all of us. I also agree that if part of the town has home delivery, all of the towns should have home delivery.
Yes.
Ms. Osborne, when you were on this board, did you go to the post office at that time about this issue?
I've, I've gone to them a number of times over the years.
Has it been different people in charge there so that the one you talked to this year is going next year or?
Some of our postmasters have been more kindly about delivering if we have our street address on there.
Has this been, this has always been going on?
Their current post office, well, let's see, I've been here in town 40 years, you know, basically. There've been years when I haven't been here, but.
But they're, they're always just saying the town's too small.
Yes, that has been their answer every single time.
Did they give you any type of guideline that the town would have to reach a certain number or anything?
No guidelines.
Where they go from being too small to now large enough?
No. Well, we're too small simply because everybody else gets on a rural mail delivery route. You're on a rural mail delivery route.
Yeah, I was surprised when you told me that because I thought the town got it. Because, because until you brought it up at the last meeting, I didn't know it was.
I mean, it's been, it's been an ongoing issue, at least off and on for the last 40 years. I think there's time for resolution as the town gets bigger. You know, you're discriminating against those of us who live within what I call the old town. And if we can't get mail delivery and the post office says we can't because we're too small, then the whole town must be too small, not just old town.
Right, I agree.
Thank you.
We're going to continue to try to fix that. I don't know if we'll be successful or not.
A point person to do that, because at the chamber meeting last Wednesday also, it was brought up that they were glad that you got up and talked about it and reignited this, Joanne. So we'll try again and hopefully we can get some statistics out of them, not just to say, you're too small. What is their standard of too small? Is what we need to find out.
I think, I think I'm more effective up here than I am over there.
You did a good job up here, too.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I hadn't planned to speak, but I, this issue has made me think a little bit. I too sat on that side of the board. And this issue is the old issue. It's been discussed a half a dozen times. I just would like to suggest that we take a different approach. I don't believe this board or the mayor has the clout to get the post office to move off-center. 30 years I dealt with the post office and I know exactly how they deal with things. I suggest that we call our senator and our congressman, because they are a federal agency and they'll take up the battle for you. I think it would be more effective. I know the post office does not like to get inquiries from congressmen and senators. So that's the only suggestion I have to resolve the problem.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, the mayor's not here, so we won't have a mayor's report. Okay, the mayor's not here, so we won't have a mayor's report. Staff reports, chief of police.
Good evening, commissioners, Mr. Vice Mayor. During the period of March 9th through March 24th, we responded to twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine calls for service. In your packet, you'll see that, again, the majority of those are self-initiated calls for service by the officers. What is interesting, since the beginning of the month, we have had eleven drug arrest cases. Of those, the majority have been heroin arrests, with a few marijuana arrests, I mean, large-scale, medium-scale marijuana arrests, distribution cases with juveniles, and some hash, along with meth. So we are seeing a wide variety of drugs that are floating around the streets of Rising Sun. And I'd like to take one second to say thank you to the officers of the department. We're talking about four officers that have gone out on the streets of Rising Sun, and they're uncovering this kind of activity in our community. Many of those officers don't get thanked. They often get, you know, other things said about them, but they are tirelessly working to make sure that the community is safe. I hope that the citizens we serve realize that law enforcement cannot do this alone. We are the introduction to the criminal system. We'll take the cases that we get to the state's attorney's office for prosecution. They take them before the courts, and the end results come from a jury or a judge. It's not the law enforcement officer that decides the case. So we can do our best at putting together a good case and take it to the state's attorney's office so that they can prosecute. And having as much time in law enforcement that I have, thirty-some years, and having been in the capacity to work directly with the state's attorney's office and prosecutors, I've learned a whole lot about putting cases together. And I can see that our officers have grown tremendously. They are doing great with putting some of these cases together. They're not perfect. They're still going to learn and grow. But from what I'm reading in reports today, they have come a long way from what they used to write. So I'd like to just take that time and say thank you to those guys, because they do a tremendous job. And good news, when you entered the lobby downstairs, you saw that we have a nice, new, shiny, red drug drop box. We are the second community in the county to have a permanent drug drop box location. It is sitting inside the Vestivale downstairs. It will not stay there. It should be outside. Once we get it mounted outside, it will become functional. But again, we did get that as the result of a grant from CVS. That means that the town of Rising Sun, the citizens, did not have to pay a dime for that drop box, and it's estimated to cost near a thousand Next, the last meeting, I spoke about the ballistic vest replacement grants. We have some officers who are in that period of time where their vests need to be replaced. The grant has been completed. I'm only waiting for the signature from the mayor so we can submit it, submit the hard copy. The electronic copy's been submitted already. And hopefully we can get awarded some funds to help offset the cost of replacing the three ballistic vests that we have to replace. Next, during the spring of 2014, the police chiefs in Cecil County came together in one of our meetings and realized that we were lacking in some areas of sharing information. We have a system in place where we use a similar software, but it did not meet our current needs and standards. So we looked to get funding, which Chief Brooks from the Department of Emergency Service was able to do. He sought out to get a grant and get funding for a new report management system and a computer-aided dispatch system. We put together the RFPs and got a vendor who is now working on developing the software. We anticipate that to be in place before the new year. Some segments of it are going to be in place. The great thing about this is, and we've talked about this as a group before, each car will now have a AVL, which means we'll be able to track every police car and tell you who is the closest in proximity to a call for service and get the fastest response time. Now, in the town of Rising Sun, that may not seem that big, because if you're on one end, you're only a few minutes away from a call for service. But it's grand when you look at the entire county. If you have an emergency situation, and you're looking to see what car is the closest, you can now just look on a board and say, hey, that officer's close, let's send him. The other thing is, it replaces the current laptop computers in each car with a new tablet to function in the same way as the laptop computers have done. And the great part, again, that costs nothing to the town of Rising Sun because of the grant process that we underwent. Also, I have sat in on the board for the Bassmaster 15 Committee. And I may be the first in the county to talk about this, and I'm probably speaking out of turn. But we may see some residual effects in Rising Sun, because this tournament is an ESPN-sponsored tournament, and they're talking upwards, you know, the thousands of attendees for a four-day event. It coincides with other events at the drag strip and throughout the county. So the influx of tourism into the county at some point in time may affect us. I know the police department has been asked to assist. We're considering what we can do for these events. But it's set for a second or third week of August. So those are some of the things that are going on in town and around the county. Is there any questions for me?
Because I understand that the new system is county and all municipalities in the county, but does not include the state police, because they're on their own statewide system.
Yes. The state, it's an awkward situation. It gets us to the level where we are almost ready to join a statewide radio system. Before, and just recently, we've started getting funding to get us up to speed with the rest of the state. But the rest of the state went to a 700-megahertz system, and in the plans, it did not include Cecil County, which happens sometimes. But, and it's the state level. It's not the county level. It's the state.
They probably looked at the weather map, you know, the US-
So recently, the new administration has found funding for it, and they're looking to get us up to speed there. But what that system also does, it allows all of us to have the same reporting system. All that information, all that data that we collect on a daily basis, we're putting into a system that is now shared by each law enforcement agency. So we're not duplicating services all around the county. We now have that immediately in our systems. It provides a lot of intelligence for the law enforcement community, and it should look to expedite a lot of the business of the police and get those guys back on the street faster. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Town administrator?
Yeah, I just have two quick items. As we're waiting for Davenport, if you remember, they came in a couple of weeks ago about rate studies. They have the first draft of some of the rate studies done. So we'll be meeting with them next week to go over the first draft. The second item is that we are double, as part of our daily routines here, we discovered that there were some properties in town that are not in our utility billing list, but they are annexed into the town. And there's nothing wrong with that, just it became an exercise of completely understanding which residents' properties get services from the town, such as sewer and water and trash, and which do not. The other thing that we were notified by MML in relation to that is that there is a chance that the town is not getting its percentage of income tax from the state like they should if the town did not update the list of properties that are listed as being in the town of Rising Sun. And so that sparked the question that we've realized over the past couple of years. There's been a lot of things that we have assumed have been updated, but they're not. So we're doing our own reconciliation of all of our properties in town to make sure who's getting what, and then provide a list to the comptroller's office of the, every street in town, the starting address and the ending address, so that they can verify that we're getting the proper percentage of income tax that we're supposed to get in town. So maybe, maybe something will come out of it, but at least we'll know that our records are up to date.
That brings a thought to my mind. It involves the post office. Suppose the person filing his taxes only lists his, this is post office box number and address.
Yeah. Yep. But I don't think you could fill, can you fill out a tax return using a post office? I think you can-
I don't know.
At the state level.
You can.
It's the federal level, you can't.
You have to put your both.
Put the physical address and the post office.
Right.
Just a thought.
Yeah.
You also have to designate any municipalities you live in or anything like that.
Right.
It's, yeah.
Okay, anything else?
That's it.
Historical preservation commission?
My comments will be brief. We participated in the cabin fever event at James, what's the name of that church?
Moore's Chapel.
Moore's Chapel. And I can very comfortably stand before you and tell you, I'm glad we did. It was a good turnout. It was a good event. It gave us some good exposure, and we had some very interesting questions. The only thing that I regret is in the paper, everybody was recognized except the historic preservation commission. I hope next time that we'll be recognized.
Dr. Cheryl, she wrote the article.
I know who wrote it. And with that, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any old business? New business on our agenda, we have the revised consent decree with MDE. You're all aware, we've been under a consent decree from MDE for the failures of our sewer treatment lagoon. Fines that we were facing were, could have been very large. The town administrator and I, and the town attorney met with MDE last fall. Some, I can't remember the date, but we have now a new consent decree from the Maryland Department of the Environment. It lists our penalties as thirteen, $133,300, the, which is bad. The good thing in this consent decree is that those fees, those penalties will be waived if we finish our sewer plant on time. So we have signed this, right?
You guys have to authorize signing it.
Okay, so I need a motion. You all have this in your packet. I need a motion to authorize the-
I motion that we authorize the updated consent decree. It's been reviewed by our attorney, and I believe there was a favorable recommendation from the town attorney to move forward with this.
I would second that.
And a motion is second. Any other comments?
I will say one thing, Mr. Vice Mayor. The, it's also worth noting that in addition to the completing the sewer plant by the date that was October 1st, they're also giving us an additional year to work out any-
Yeah, I failed to mention that.
Any issues with the discharge, if it's over limits or whatever, we'll have a year to get it within-
We have an extra year to make sure the plant is running properly.
So it's, it's actually, the terms of this are quite favorable-
Right.
-for the town. It's probably about the best we could ask for, and maybe it'd be better than we could ask for-
Yeah.
...in some ways. And, you know, at this point, I believe the sewer plant's on time, and if we had, if that weren't, we'd have bigger problems than this anyway.
Right.
I look at it as, we have till October of this year for it to work, and October of next year for it to work right. That's the way I look at it.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion is passed. The next item under new business, the town administrator and I and town attorney met with GHD engineers today. They are the engineers who are, we are looking at to, to our Chester Waterline design. The good thing about this company is that they have offices in both Maryland and Pennsylvania, which makes them very familiar with all the permitting processes that are necessary and all the other rules and regulations in Maryland, and also in Pennsylvania, which we're going to have to meet. To me, in meeting with them today, there were three engineers that came up to meet with us. They were very impressive, I thought. So I would recommend that we, let me start over on that. They are going to send a copy of an agreement to work for us to our town attorney, and he's going to review it. Based on what they said and our attorney said, that is more formality than anything else. The agreement is one of the standard-type agreements that, you know, are developed. So I would like to move that we authorize the appointment of GHD Incorporated Engineers as our Chester Water engineer.
Sorry, is that a motion?
Yes.
Okay. I second.
Motion is second. Any comments?
No.
Doesn't that have to go through the bidding process, or has the bidding process been completed?
I don't, who?
I didn't hear the question.
Asked if it would go through the bidding process, and this is consulting, or no, I'm sorry, engineering.
It's contracted services, so we don't have to. And let me, let me, Commissioner Walker, I guess to ease maybe some concerns, we're trying to get, we've talked to four different engineering firms about this, and some of them we have used on other projects. And we don't want to, these are big projects. You're about to face projects that would keep a community occupied for a year, and at the end of the year, they'd say, wow, look what we've accomplished. But we've got Ryan Drive, you know, 15,000 feet of linear four-inch line, streets that need to be red down, a sewer plant, a water line. So having the same engineer do all of that is just stretching them too thin. So we've looked at four different engineering firms. We like this engineering firm. In order to get on the docket, to get USDA funding, there has to be paperwork that has to be submitted by June. They are more than capable of doing it. They can make that deadline. But to wait to work out the details of an agreement that is basically a standard agreement, and then wait two weeks to come back to you guys with that, is just cutting into that very critical timeline we have of getting to the June deadline.
Any, any other comments?
I think so. The short answer is, is due to funding constraints.
That's just a question.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion pass. Commissioners' comments? Commissioner Offenreith?
Okay. Calvin, do we have any pictures tonight?
No, our computer's not working.
Okay. Just a little update more on the main job that's been going on up on Ryan Drive. Our town guys were back up there again, and they ran into another issue, a couple of more issues up there. One goes back to our original complaints about no as-built plans to find out where things are. So we're digging a lot of holes in that cul-de-sac up there, looking for connections to find them, because we don't have a plan to show where they are. There were five more connections that needed to be replaced. Since our last meeting, I talked about that. Seven were done on the initial water leak that started. We went, they went back in and were able to locate three and replace the saddle clamps quite quickly. Took a while to find the fourth one, and we haven't found the fifth one yet. But also, in this process, they found that a water pipe, a PVC pipe, that comes off that cul-de-sac and feeds some homes on Biggs Highway that were- that cul-de-sac and feeds some homes on Biggs Highway that were annexed into town. Is being, a water line is being run through some people's yards, but it is Schedule 40 PVC, which is not rated for the pressure that a water feed line comes in. That's a low pressure, basically a sewer line. So once again, we have another inferior product being run underground without the proper bedding, without the proper pipe, and probably the cheap saddles. So we kinda held up on digging up anymore up there right now. You know, the five guys we got working in town are stretched pretty thin. So they still wanna go back up and find that fifth connection. And we've also gotten KCI back out there to look at those pipes and give us a recommendation of what to do. Since we've already got this road so dug up, we don't wanna, you know, go ahead and start planning to repave it with a pipe that is probably gonna break next. As you fix one issue, the weakest link will show up next, and so on and so on. So what are, we've talked with our contractor Meadows, who's been working with us, along with KCI, Ron Thomas, who's seen so many of these issues in town, and Calvin and myself have been up there. The best thing to do is to go ahead and replace this line, since we've got so much of that road dug up already, because a large section of that Schedule 40 PVC pipe is under the asphalt. So before we get ready to go back in there and backfill with the fillable flow and start preparing that roadbed this summer so we can upgrade it and make it last with the new pavement, we wanna go in there and replace that, that line. Now, just to give you kind of a, an idea of what that up there has cost us over the past few weeks, it's approximately thirty, what'd we say, Calvin, thirty-five thousand dollars already?
Yeah.
And replacing this pipe could be approximately with parts and labor about another six thousand dollars. But it could cost us three times that much later if we don't do it now. So it's one of those things. We've, we've got it apart, let's fix it right. It's, we're better to spend the money and fix it right the first time than spend twice as much and fix it twice. And this way, we eliminate somebody coming out one day and seeing a fountain in their backyard that they didn't install themselves. And that's what's gonna happen, just like with those clamp, saddle clamps, their inferior product didn't last as long as they should've. And as we start fixing these issues at the top of Ryan Drive, just like I was explaining to the gentleman in here before, those weak points are gonna start working their way down the hill, all the way down to 273, we're afraid of. Because every time we open it up, we find another problem that we have found that there was notifications from engineers that worked on that project, letting the board and mayor at that time and the town administrator back at that time know that it wasn't being done, but it was allowed to go on. So now we've gotta deal with it, and we're not gonna sweep it under the rug. I don't think any of us agree on that. We're gonna do it right, we're gonna do it right this time, and then that community has got another good forty years of not having to worry about it. So that's the biggest project with streets and sidewalks right now. KCI is still working on our evaluation to finish up the roads before the snow hit last month, and then this Ryan Drive thing, they were seventy percent done. They've also got about sixty percent of the work done on the planning and zoning maps they were working on for our board, and we'll have a product in front of us at next month's meeting. So we're just gonna continue to fix that up there, and we'll keep you updated. One of the things I asked Calvin about is, we've been hearing a lot of the phone ringing off the hook, but evidently, the community up there has been watching the website and Facebook, and they know what's going on, and I've talked to a few residents up there and kept them informed of what's going on. So we haven't been getting bombarded in town hall with phone calls about what's going on. Been keeping them informed, and it's, it's worked out real well. So Planning and Zoning meets again next month, third Monday of the month, and we're still working on our land development codes, and we're gonna start working on a new one after that's finished. Sunset laws and some more as-built ordinances to protect us from things like this going forward. As we get new developments, new construction coming in, trying to be rushed through, we can take our time, look it over, and protect the town and the current residents going forward. So that's all I have tonight.
Thank you. Commissioner Scully?
I don't have a report tonight, but I do wanna thank everyone for their patience, for having a family issue that probably consumed about ten days, which then backs your life up about thirty for all the other things that you wanna be involved in. So I appreciate everyone's patience and while I get my schedule back to normal.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Warnock?
Yeah, so in the Parks and Rec Department, we've been kind of, I guess you could sort of say, under the weather, although it's more under snow than, than the weather itself. But we've been unable to really do a whole lot over the last few months due to obvious weather issues, but we're starting to thaw out and move forward on projects. The Boy Scouts, I've met with a few of them in the last week, where we, you should actually at the dog park, see substantial construction start this weekend of the Boardwalk and Learning Center. Additionally, so you'll, you'll actually see pillars and piers going, if the ground's dry enough for them to pour concrete for like one or two days, then they'll, they'll get the footers in for the, I guess, the learning platform. And then, once that's in place, then pretty much everything else is, that they could do, no matter what the weather is. If they have to go and hammer nails in the rain, they can do that. The, over at Veterans Park, I met with the Boy Scout working on, or they're actually all Eagle Scout candidates, I should be, you know, they're seventeen years old, so I'll give them a little more respect than just calling them Boy Scouts, they're nearly Eagle Scouts. So anyway, the Eagle Scout candidates, I talked with our Eagle Scout candidate working at Veterans Park, and we've worked out the dimensions of the bridge, and he's hoping to start on that in the beginning of April. So we've got actually, I think, I don't know which park is actually under, is swampier right now, with the, the ground's still thawing out. I think the, probably below a certain level, the ground's probably still frozen, and the water just has nowhere to run. It's, everything's real slushy right now. The, on April 25th, it's a Saturday, it's actually the same day as the Tiger Trot, which is gonna be interesting. The Rising Sun Middle School has the Tiger Trot at 9:00 AM. If anybody in, you know, in the crowd or anybody watching this is a runner, it's a great cause, it supports Rising Sun Middle School. At the same time, at Veterans Park, there is a park cleanup being sponsored by Octora Watershed and B-More, which is Moore's Chapel, it's a volunteer group, is the, as well as the Town of Rising Sun sponsored. And there's a few additional sponsors, I don't think I brought the sheet with me, but Exelon and the others, I think Purdue, and there's a few corporate sponsors. But nonetheless, we're gonna be working on trying to retrieve some of the years of trash and metal accumulation and such in Veterans Park, particularly in the wooded area. So we, we hopefully will get some of that cleaned up, which will be good, since we'll have a new trail going through there by the summer, and it would be disappointing to have a lot of trash lined along trail. The, so that'll be from 9:00 AM to noon on April 25th. I'll be bringing that back up again at the next meeting. As, to echo Mr. Mommy's sentiment on the cabin fever, that was a great event. Got a chance to talk to some people about some of the projects going on in Parks and Rec and within the Town of Rising Sun, between the stormwater management projects we're working on at Veterans Park, as well as the trail system that we're looking to start developing around town. Got a lot of positive feedback on that, and we're actually in the process of trying to develop a master plan effectively for our trail system. And I'll be, now that ground's starting to thaw out, and we can actually start taking people back into the areas that we need to discuss, I'm gonna work on getting my meeting with the county moving forward, as I, Mr. Schnekkenberger's here tonight, so I'll, he'll be...
What, what exact area you're looking?
It'll actually be with Al Wine, and Terry actually asked me to set it up with Al and some folks from Planning and Zoning and such, because there's, it's over the former railroad right away.
Oh, I see.
So, which the county still owns through the town. So, and there's some discussions around that, so, anyway. And then we also have a farmer's market that's going to be starting this year, the Calora's, the Calora Farmers and Vendors Market. They plan on having a market every first and third Wednesday from May to October. They have an information session for people interested in being a vendor. It'll be tomorrow night at the library from 6:30 to 7:30. They're currently seeking vendors that are interested in committing to a full season at a discounted rate, which will include a permanent prime location for their booth. I don't know what the booth space are gonna cost or anything, I actually don't even, they're, they're still working out exactly where it's going to be. They're trying to secure an indoor location, preferably in, within town here. If, if they can't, they've, I think they've got a couple other ideas, but they're still working out the details, but I think they'll probably have more of that information at the vendor session tomorrow night, and hopefully as this moves forward, we'll be providing more information about it. But I know there's been some interest in the past in the Town of Rising Sun about a farmer's market. There's been some discussion of one in the parking lot next to Sun Pharmacy, I believe, in the past, I think there was some discussion. One of the ideas that we suggested the other day when we were meeting on this was that maybe the grassy area across from the town parking lot, between that and the bank's parking lot, but they're, I think they would prefer to have an indoor location that way in the summer when it's really hot. They won't be, you know, out in the, out in the sun, and during the, on rainy days, they'll also have a roof over their head. So I think one of the, I was actually considering possibly even offering up the pavilion at the park as a location, if they, you know, at least it'd be under a roof. So, anyway, hopefully more information on that coming soon. And that is my report.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Water and sewer. We met Monday with, at the sewer, new sewer plant with USDA, the contractor and the engineer, the town. Everything is proceeding very well. The winter has, of course, had some effect on their work, but they've managed to work almost every day this winter. The substantial completion date has remained the same, July, I think it's 15th of this year, and the final completion date is October. So we're, it looks, it looks good, and I'm satisfied that we will meet MDE's consent. We, and as we discussed earlier, we have started working more on the water line, and that is a process now that's going to be taking up some time. Other than that, I don't have anything else either. Do you?
Sure, sure. I'm, for some of you who don't know me, I'm Dan Schnekkenberger, I'm a county council, Cesar County Councilor. Can't hear me.
We need you on tape, Dan.
Sorry, but... Anyway, Dan Schnekkenberger, I live in Fair Hill, but this is District 3, and been trying to get down here to come down to one of your town council meetings, but they kinda interfere with county business also, but we don't have a meeting tonight, so I took the opportunity just to come down and see how things are going. And, and for the most part, my, my field with Rising Sun is, you have a lot of positive things going, going, going on right now, and I know you're having some issues with some old infrastructure issues. I didn't realize it to the degree I've heard tonight, but, but certainly in, in respect to what the county can offer, if you want some expertise, or you just want some third-party evaluations about what's going on in age of infrastructure, I'm sure Scott Flannigan will be glad to assess and going forward. So wanted to comment, I was asked to comment on economic development study that Commissioner Warnock and Calvin had, and looked at. I did look at a couple responses. Actually, one was pretty low, but it was still pretty responsive. One was super high, and I would've waived that just out of, out of sight, but I know you've reissued it, I didn't know whether you've gotten responses back already, or you've already made a selection as far as how you're gonna move forward with that. I didn't hear it tonight.
No, we have not reissued it yet. We're, we're trying to make sure that we're grant-eligible through USDA.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Yeah, we're also working with, was it University of Maryland?
Yeah.
I can't remember the exact division, but they're working on the Sustainable Communities designation for us.
Are you waiting to get that before you go back out? I know you took that out of the RFP, just to say, hey, we can probably get this one around.
I don't think we're waiting on that, but we, we, that was originally in the RFP, we're removing it from the RFP because of some of the costs associated with that. So we're going, we're gonna go back out without that in the RFP, and the University of Maryland, they actually have some of the, I guess, is it their graduate students or undergrad? I think it's their graduate students that are working on completing that Sustainable Communities designation application for us.
Oh, okay. Have they given you a timeline on that, when they're finished with that?
I mean, their classes through June?
I think one of their grad students graduates in May, so that's like the timeline.
I was gonna say, two weeks, maybe? But, no, I think that's a good thing. I think, I think certainly the timing's good for the town to take a look at, you know, what constitutes economic development, and what you would like to do in the area. I, I think you have a lot of good positive things going on, your location, your sewer plant hopefully is, is on board. And certainly, what I would tell you, George, do not let it get to the deadline, and maybe the county can help you at least continue to give MDE a delay. Absolutely, you should not pay any of those fines, and I'll be glad to help you never pay those fines.
Those fines are the thing that worries us the most about our deadline. It's the financing through USDA. If we don't have it done on time, we lose that financing.
Mm-hmm.
So that's what really concerns us.
Yeah.
MDE, that hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars, although a lot of money, is not near what it's gonna cost us if we have to pay for the financing at the higher interest rates if we don't...
So your interest rates will bump up if you don't meet the construction deadline? They, you have a kicker like an arm almost?
We, USDA, the money available from USDA disappears.
Disappears?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which means that the sewer plant is job one within this town right now.
Absolutely.
Above all else.
It sounds like a higher priority.
We try and keep the water on, but...
Essentially, what it means is that the structure, the construction debt gets restructured under USDA financing, which is much more favorable terms, longer term, lower rate. Without that commitment, the restructure of that debt to long-term debt would not be as favorable, it would be on a shorter term and a higher rate.
Right.
So we wanna complete on time, so we get the more favorable terms from the USDA.
Be on the commercial market versus government market.
Well, I, I know the winter hasn't been very good for, for construction or doing any kind of site work, so I don't know, I don't know if you've called up here in, you know, a few weeks in March that it's been reasonable to work or not.
They have amazingly done very well during the winter with their, there's been work that they can, have been able to continue on the inside there. So it has slowed them down to a degree, but not enough that it's affecting our final or our completion dates.
Sure. Well, I'm glad to hear that. I also wanted to let you know, I had offered up to the mayor that I have plenty contacts with Old Dominion. They're obviously doing a huge expansion called Wildcat. I'm sure they'd be glad to give you a presentation, presentation at a future meeting. I offered to have them come up this, for tonight, and I never heard back from the mayor, so I'm, I assume you probably would get an update from them. They're, they're, they've been told, or they told the county council that they, they may have as much as a hundred and eighty million dollar economic impact to the county. This is the amount of construction workers are gonna bring in, the overnight stays, the lodging, all of these things to roll in as they're building. And, and all of that's gonna start ramping up here very soon, here in spring and going forward. So Chief, you probably will see a variety of out-of-town license plates cruising through the street, a lot more like we're in Colorado, because a lot of the workers are very specialized to work on these power plants, so they travel around the country. So you, you, you should see more, and I would encourage the town to try to take benefit of it, you know, and, you know, from your businesses and what have you.
Also, Warren, you were talking about that, I was gonna say, you were talking about your bed and breakfast, there you go.
Well, there you go.
My bed and breakfast is full, thanks.
Maybe with some contractors, but, but even so, if, if, if there's an opportunity to get some additional income, you know, for probably another year or fourteen months, it's probably something you should take a look at, maybe how you can attract them down here. They are doing much more of a bigger campaign on grant funding, too. So you may find that there's some relationships there where you can actually get some money towards the town. Also wanted to comment a little bit on this drug and heroin problem. The Lieutenant Governor came up on May, on March 17th and had his first commission meeting on, on the heroin problem around the state, and I realize that from your report... And I realize that from your report, you're certainly seeing more heroin within the Town of Rising Sun. And Scott Adams had, I went to his recent intelligence meeting last Thursday, about 80% of the drug-related arrests are heroin. So we still have plenty of it in the community, even if the overdose rate has decreased slightly, where we're not really even in the top five of the, of the state, but it's still a problem. It's still around everywhere else. The one good news about Rising Sun, in this intelligence meeting, they showed the hotspots within the county for arrests and other drug activity. And Cecil County Sheriff's Office, he's only had three calls during the one-week period up here, where they had as many as 32 in certain locations in Northeast and Elkton. So you must be arresting all the criminals, because we're not getting many through the county. So I think that's all good. Also want to let you know, the county's regional park, there's additional funding in our capital investment budget this year. I haven't necessarily seen it completely. I've seen a glimpse of it, we'll know more in about a week. I would ask the town to visibly demonstrate either a support of this project or not going forward, because there could be some, a majority on our board is sitting here wavering, should we, should we spend this kind of money? And we're looking at upwards of $3 million for the second phase. But I would like to see whether Rising Sun looks at this as something they want to see built, and what kind of plans you're probably doing to coordinate with that and have a benefit to town. Also for Andy Harris, have a lot of connections with his office. Be glad to reach out to him as far as the post office problem. If you guys feel like you have that covered, that's great, but Mary O'Keefe is one of the people that run his Bel Air office. That's probably somebody who would come up here and investigate that, but I think your point's perfectly right. You know, a call from Congress then to the post office usually does kind of clear up any inaccuracies as far as what should be going on. So just wanted to touch on all those things. I had a chance last year to come up to some of your recreational events, and I got to tell you guys, I've been all over the county, and Rising Sun kicks butt. You have the best, the best community events of any town I've been to, so congratulations on that, you're really doing that well. If I can help you in my role, I can't come to every meeting, I don't even know if I can come to every, every other monthly meeting, but if you have specific issues, then maybe the county can help you out with, let me know, and I'll be glad to help you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it? Thanks, Dan.
Thank you. Our next meeting is Tuesday, April 14th at 7:00. Any other business? If not, I'll listen to a motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn?
Commissioner Walker?
Yes.
Just a little bit on what Commissioner Schnekkenberger was saying. Dan, we really appreciate you being here tonight and all the time that I've been in Town Hall dealing with planning and zoning and town meetings. We've seen you take more of an active interest in what's going on in our community than any of the past commissioners. Dan was at our National Night Out, at the mayor's Spooktacular he started, and he told me back then, you know, you were at another part of the county and said nobody was there, but everybody was here. So we really appreciate you being here tonight and coming to our town events and being an active participant in this area. We greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, the county has spent a lot of time with the big three and the growth corridor. We've had a lot of discussions with infrastructure, with Elkton and Northeast and Perryville, but, you know, we have some great outlying towns. Chesapeake City's doing some tremendous things in their community. Cecilton, Joe Zhang is a tremendous mayor, and they're doing very good things. Hell, he's running a six-mile pipe, the people near Pierce Creek do, you know, so they can take off their poison wells. I mean, it's, and it basically has water capacity to do it, and it's going to charge in town rates. He's not even trying to make a buck off it. So I think we spend a lot of attention in the bigger towns, and maybe not so much the ones we're working outside, but Rising Sun's in District 3, so I'm glad to help. And certainly, you know, you've had a lot of challenges. If, you know, three or four years ago, it'd be like, you know, which way are we going? But it sounds like you've kind of things turned around.
Well, we appreciate you coming tonight and taking, taking an active interest in our community. It's really appreciated. Okay, I'm done.
I need a second.
Second.
Have a motion and second to adjourn? Let's go.
Aye.
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 Back the hammer down.